Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. It's Thursday, January 4th of 2024. Welcome, everyone. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
To the Father. To the Father. One nation. Under the umbrella of liberty, justice, and all. Okay. We have in attendance tonight Dana and Jim, Mary Beth are online and we've got Jerry and Andy and Howard and Norm and myself here in the town office. So, good evening again. Let's start with the approval of the agenda.
Let's go through the agenda. I get it.
Okay.
Well, excuse me, who are the voting members tonight?
Um.
Four.
So we've got.
Six. I guess I am.
Um, yeah, so I guess, I guess Jim, you would be the alternate that would not be voting tonight. Okay.
No.
Thank you for that, Norm.
You're welcome.
Um, any changes or ready to approve the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, no public. So we'll move down to new business. And what we do, the first meeting of each year is to, according to the rules, our rules of procedure, is to, I call it reorganization, but simply we will vote in Chair and Vice Chair. So the floor is open for nominations.
Who?
Um, we can.
Chair or Vice Chair.
Or we could do it as a team or?
Okay. I nominate Barbara Norris Pulling to be Chair and Dana Peterson to be Vice Chair.
Aye.
Second.
The table for three.
Dana, you okay with that? Still with us?
Yes.
I am.
Okay.
So yes, I am. I'm okay with that.
Okay, I think I'm supposed to ask if there's any other nominations. Okay. So we'll vote on that slate of Pulling and Dana. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations Dana.
Congratulations Barbara.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's the only thing we have to do each year, right?
Vote on your rules of procedure. Do you want to wait?
We're supposed to do that every year? We're supposed to look at them and?
Yeah, so we, last, the last time we've done it was on the anniversary of land. We adopted them in 2022. So what, we don't, and we're next time we're going to wait till beginning of the year. So we can do it next meeting. It's not, it's not a.
Yeah. Yeah, if anyone wants to take a look at the rules of procedure and see if we need to change anything between now and, and then, which would be the 25th of the month.
About the schedule? Just.
What about it?
Just set it, I mean, just look through and decide if we're going to keep the three week schedule and if it works out for us or if we want to modify it for the next couple of months, three months anyway.
Okay, we, in our early December meeting, we set, you know, tonight, and then I think the assumption was it would be every three weeks after that. Does that not work for folks?
No, I haven't really looked at it hard. I didn't just see it through February. It works for me, so.
At least it's not on Valentine's Day.
It's not on Valentine's Day. And those calendars are done through the end of the year, so.
Yeah. Always a quick trip to Staples again.
All right, then we'll just.
Okay. Um, so we've got a couple of things to look at, also under new business. At Thistle Hill, there is a boundary line adjustment being applied for, and Robert Stedman is here.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good.
You're representing who, Robert?
Yes, please. If you want, I can give you a quick synopsis. Back in '06, we bought Lot 5 and built our residence and have been there ever since. We subsequently purchased Lot 6 of Thistle Hill Development and some common land. And about 12 years ago, I purchased approximately six acres from Ruth Conway. Those are the, those are the, the properties that we're talking about and we, Jean and I are in retirement now and we want to get ready to sell our home. Our son, we gave the six acres that we purchased from Conway a few years ago, and they've built the residence there. And what I'd like to do is have them have approximately, and I'm talking round numbers on the 10 acres. It's a little under 10 acres, but have them have about seven acres and a little under three acres would go with our residence, especially if we sell it over the next couple of years or whatever. So that, in general, that's what I'm asking approval to, to do. It, the, the properties, there's no more buildings that are going to be on the properties. It's just giving our son the land that we want to give them where they'll be residing for some time to come now.
Okay. So, um, can you, can you run us through the lots and the numbers and what's been? Where the boundary lines are changing?
So down on the bottom where it says house number 130, that's 130 Thistle Hill Place, that's our residence. And that's Lot 5. And it goes west and then north up to portion of Lot 5 where we're cutting off a portion because I built a barn on Lot 6, which if you continue up north, and I would like that area plus Lot 6 to go to my son and daughter-in-law. And part of what they own now that I mow just north of the house where it says portion of Lot D, I'd like to go with our residence. And that's, that's about it. It, it looks complicated, but it's, I don't think it is. Howard, you've been up there. You, you you knew when we were working with our son to give them the, the property. It's just a, an extension now of giving them the rest of what I think should go with their house.
Yeah.
Bob, uh, so what you, what you have labeled as portion of Lot D, that chunk there is going to go to Robert?
That, that portion of Lot D will, will go to Robert and Jean, myself. That is currently owned by our son that we deeded to them a, a few years ago. Because that's, 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 that's like a lawn area right now and, and the, the stone wall, we want to extend that out a little bit into the woods just so that when we sell it, they have protection there. Does that make sense to you?
Uh, I'm getting there, I guess, but it's.
I'm having trouble.
I, I think.
I get it. So Robert, Robert's house is on, is on this Lot 5.
Yeah.
He wants to, he wants to take a portion of Lot D from his son and include it with his property to, to make his lot include some lawn that's right here.
Oh, okay, so this is coming.
So Robbie, Robbie's going to give him, or they're going to get that portion of Lot D to go with his house to increase the size of his lot a little bit. And then in turn, Robbie, if I'm not wrong, Robert, is this is going to pick up portion of lots, is going to pick up that Lot 6.
He's going to pick up all of six and a small portion of what used to be Lot 5 around where I built the barn at the south end of Lot 6.
So that whole, that whole property is going to.
So this line, okay, so that would make sense.
Right.
I guess it's because there isn't a line out here to look at. That's what's.
So Robbie's land is out here.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, I get it now. Let me do some clarification if I can.
Yeah, speak up, Norm. So, so.
Just get a little clarification. So if I understand it, the parcel labeled portion of Lot 5 will merge into Lot 6. Is that correct? So that will become one lot.
No, it, that, that is correct. That's going, that's going with Lot 6. I, I apologize. Yes, that's going with Lot 6 to give Robbie, our son, a little area south of the barn to, to have and to maintain. That really goes with the barn.
Now, what about where it says portion of Lot D? Does that?
Portion of Lot B?
Yes.
Yeah. That currently is owned by Robert B. and Michelle R. Stedman, and they're going to deed that to go with Lot 5, our residence, because that's a, a lawn area that, that should go with that.
And the portion of Lot 5, um, south of the barn, that goes, that will be going to you and your wife?
No, that portion of Lot 5 will go to our son with, with Lot 6. It would extend Lot 6 south just a little ways.
Okay.
And she was a boundary that's going to be dissolved to let me get it happen.
Okay.
Is the son, is your the portion of Lot 5?
That's currently, Norm, owned by Robert.
Robert and, and, yeah, but they're both Robert. That's.
It's going to go to Robert.
Robert and Jean or Robert and Michelle?
Hard to get the.
Yeah, Robert and Jean. And they're getting, they're giving that to Robert and Michelle.
Robert and Jean are giving it to Robert and Michelle.
Yep.
Okay, and then Lot 5, Robert and Jean keep that. And they're going to pick up this lot right here.
That portion of Lot D.
Yeah, okay, I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for walking us through that. So Planning Commission, do, on, on this survey, we've got, do we have proposed changes to boundary lines? We do. The name and address of the preparer, Timothy Short. Do we have numerical and graphic scale of plan, date, and north arrow?
North arrows.
Scale, got the scale.
Scales.
Dates on the bottom.
Okay, and any existing features and facilities, including roads, public utilities, and utility easements, wooded areas, structures, watercourses, ledge, wet areas, excessively steep slopes in the right of way? We've got, we've got the roads, we've got the power line. Any wooded areas here, Robert?
Any wooded area what?
On, on these, these portions of the parcels.
Lot 6 is all wooded.
It's, the, the, most of Lot 6 is lawn. And about two acres of Lot D, which is about six acres, is lawn. The rest of six is wooded. And the area where it says portion of Lot D, just northeast of the stone wall, is wooded.
I don't see any power launch. Power line you're talking about, is this?
It's on the road.
It's a, it's actually a transmission line with Green Mountain Powers.
That, that's correct.
That's where the, the road.
It's, it's to the left of where it says Thistle Hill Place going up Lot 6. The power lines to the left of that.
Oh, I see it. Thank you.
Okay. So we're probably good with number four. And we've got a location map there. All the permit fees have been paid. Bill?
Uh, so far, yes. Well, yes, everything's current.
What else? What else do we need for boundary line adjustments?
Now, is this, this going to fit in for a boundary line adjustment due to the size of land we're moving? Talking 1.3 acres is one piece of it. And are we limited, are we limited somewhat to a boundary line adjustment? Hopefully not, hopefully not.
Yeah, I, I don't think so.
Less than an acre total, I think.
Nothing that says, we don't have anything that says like percentage triggers anything.
And like, this doesn't change the use of any of these pieces? Okay. Robert, any questions for us?
No, I, the surveyor, this is kind of new to me also, but the surveyor said, once it's approved, he would provide the town the Mylar copy that is needed.
Yes, and I think it's the same 90 days we have with subdivisions. Once it's, once we approve it.
I have to submit it within 90 days?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we're doing a hearing though. This is just a preliminary one.
Do we need a hearing for a boundary line adjustment? I think, I think this.
Good question.
Now, on the application, we have a hearing date as tonight.
Just one.
I, I thought at a previous, at a previous point in time, we did not consider boundary line adjustments minor subdivisions. So the answer to that question, I think, would be no, but somebody can correct me if my memory is wrong.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, Dana.
I do have, I do have a technical question and I maybe should have asked this earlier, but on the backside of the, of Form, well, it's, it's Form 2, which is the backside of Form 1 that we got in the packet. Uh, there are the acreage changes, and I'm just having a little trouble reading the numbers that are there. Did that get already addressed?
They're off in the boxes, Dana. You see that?
I see total acreage of Lot A prior to change at 354. I see total acreage of Lot B prior to change. And then I see, I see that as 5.816. Is that supposed to be a 1.6 or am I reading that wrong? Because then I see total acreage for Lot A at 2.6, and I think that's supposed to be a 4. And I'm trying, if that is the case and the, and Lot B after change is 6.71, then that's 9.35. But I'm struggling to get 9.35 out of the original acreage or how those numbers are written. It looks like there was a scribble or a change, but on that second line, 5.8, looks like it's 816. That's the only one that has three digits after the decimal place, whereas the others all have two.
Is that a question for me? I, I don't have that in front of me. I apologize. So I, I don't know, when you say Lot, I, I don't know which one is which. I, the 5.86 is what I purchased from Lot D, original Lot D that I purchased from Conway.
5.86 or 5.1816?
Yeah, I, I it's 5.8 something. I, I don't want to misrepresent. It was just under six acres. I, I recall that.
Yep. Because the one would make sense if the other two are 64 and 71. But it, it should be.
It's, it's probably my handwriting. I apologize.
Bill, can you clarify?
It's a hundredth off. If you total the two on the top, it's a 9.4. If you total the two on the bottom, it's 9.39. If you carry the two digits.
Yeah, no, I, I get 9.35 on the bottom.
Then you're using four and I was using six.
Okay, that would be 37, but yeah. I, I was wondering if that, that 816, that, that extra six is just a mistake? Because that would, that would set everything right.
Probably. I, I, I wish.
What's on the, oh, there is no, is there a there's no plat, right, for this, or is there?
No, this.
If we accept the, the, the second one as being 2.64 and 6.71, and if the top is 3.54 and 5.81, it comes out correct.
That, that's what I was saying, right?
Okay.
But the, I was just struggling with the way the numbers were represented on those lines.
So what are the numbers?
I would have to take.
3.54. 5.81. 2.64 and 6.71.
Okay. So we dropped the six and the Lot B prior to changes. Okay. Um, I think this is it, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's like, so if the boundary line, long as we're not creating any new building lots, it can be, it'll be considered a boundary line adjustment, so.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I think we're ready for a motion. I think.
I'll make a motion to accept the boundary line adjustment as presented with the mathematical corrections proposed by Andy.
One second.
Okay. Any discussion? Mary Beth or Jim?
Yeah, looks good. Looks good to me.
Okay, so let's, uh, go to the vote. All those in favor of the boundary line adjustment for the Stedmans with the corrections to the lot sizes, as we just discussed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed? Okay, unanimous? Okay, great.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, just, um, don't forget the Mylar.
No, I, I, I'll have, I'll get on that tomorrow and it, it should have it within a week or two or whatever it takes him to do it.
Bob, can I make one, one additional suggestion?
Absolutely.
Just, just for clarification purposes, that the numbers be looked at with respect to the Mylar and that they actually are reported as they should be reflected in the filing.
So you have an, an exact.
Like, so that they, so that this planning commission, we've just accepted it as they were corrected, but if those corrections were erroneous, I'd ask Bill to just check that the, the filing of the application actually reflect what the Mylar shows.
Yeah.
Is that okay, Bill?
Yep, sounds good.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stedman.
Thank you very much. Oh, if you don't mind, I'll exit out.
Don't blame you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, have a good evening.
Good night.
Okay, I'm just going to skip down and just mention that we do have the final plat for the Cluxton subdivision. That's off Killington Avenue. We looked at that. Been stretched out a little bit. But we do have that and it looks, unless anyone wants to take a look at it.
Howard, you want to give it a once-over?
It's like you do.
This is kind of right here. You still might house it.
So overall, you think it's, you can keep looking at it. I think I'll move on to the.
It's got the, appears to have all the pins around it, but the piece that they're picking up here. It looks good to me.
Okay. Okay, we'll get it signed and get it filed or whatever it's called. Recorded.
This is the lot.
Okay, um, next thing, um, hopefully those of you who are online downloaded the the Housing Navigator program information. We'll talk about that next. So this is, um, and those of you here have, have an extra copy. This is something that came out of the last legislative session. It's, it's money to be spent and used this calendar year. And it has several different parts to it. The first one is picking, this would be housing for residential housing, picking sites. And, you know, this is through the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. The planner, Logan Solomon, sent a survey to the Planning Commission and the Select Board. And, you know, just, you know, what kind of, it had some general questions, then it had some very specific questions. The specific ones were like, what sites are you interested in developing? I don't think there's anything that's town-owned that's available. So these would all be private landowners. So, um, I, the Select Board, I asked the Select Board if we, if we would go back to the Regional Planning Commission and say, why don't you send? The select board, I asked the select board if we, if we would go back to the regional planning commission and say, why don't you send the survey to residents first? And that's what's happening. It's, it's almost done and ready to go out. So hopefully some people will come forth in that survey and say, I've got property or how about this piece of property? How about? You know, former mall, Diamond Run Mall or something like that. Um, and then there are questions about, um. The density of the housing or what kind of housing it would be. You know, from single family on up to, um, apartment buildings and everything in between. So we'll, we'll start with that survey. We'll take a look at it when he, when, you know, he gets it out and gets some responses back. And that'll help us with the first part. Of, you know, mapping some sites. And then, uh, it pretty much gets handed over to Logan. He, he will be responsible then to. To line up some developers who would, who are interested in doing residential housing. Uh, if they're out there. And then he will help them through the regulatory process and the financial process. So what, what we have, what, what we're doing. Um, is, is just that number one. And then, um, we can keep tabs on the other, um, things. But that's where it stands right now, and we don't have a whole lot of time. It's just, it's just calendar year twenty twenty-four. And I'm not sure how much interest is out there.
Much money.
Well, there's no money yet. Except for, um, helping developers, you know, ma- matching them to the sites, just it, it. Yeah, there's no, no housing money yet. The, what the legislature passed is this navigator program. It kind of facilitates getting to that point where, um. They are looking for funding.
What is the twenty-seven thousand that was mentioned in the paper today? The twenty-seven-five, twenty-seven thousand five hundred?
Oh, I think that's what each of the regional planning commissions got for, for, for Logan and his counterparts. And the other ten RPCs.
That's the money they have to conduct their survey and then if there, if there are matches to make those matches.
Um, I don't know what matches you're referring to, but.
You said developers and land.
So it's, it's. It's essentially that money is for Logan and his counterpart's salary. Uh, because he will be doing, they will be doing most of the leg, you know, it's the initial work.
And the, the planning just needs to be done in twenty twenty-four?
Just these three steps and hopefully the legislature will come forth. We're like, okay, so here's some construction money.
But it wouldn't have to be built in twenty twenty-four.
No, no, just these.
Just, just get it lined up.
Yeah. So, yeah, I couldn't think of any town-owned land.
But you also can't ensure that anybody's gonna actually built. Uh, build a, a house in twenty twenty-four. That's step three, ensure the housing is built, but. That, it's only the first two steps, basically. That you're gonna be able to accomplish in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at too, Dana.
Yep.
It's not a.
It's not like, it's not as if it has to be built in twenty twenty-four. It's to get all of the moving, all of the parts in place. To make it possible. To come in with the money to do the construction.
Right. So the plan will be set in place with all of the funding identified. Is what I'm assuming.
I think. Yeah, I think so.
But I, I, I too was thinking along the lines that, uh, Jerry was expressing that. I, in a year, i- if you could get to step three and all those things would be in place, I think you'd be doing pretty well.
Right. And, you know, I, I, I think Logan and his counterparts, y- yes, they, they may be looking for, uh, funding. Um, loans or that sort of thing for the developers, if they can swing it.
Yep.
In addition to hoping that the legislature comes forth with.
That would really be the only incentive. If the legislature doesn't come forth with any money, why wouldn't a developer just find his own land and build his stuff and not bother with all this stuff? The state's not gonna encourage them or. With some financial.
Or subsidize the loans.
Really no reason to even do this. It just sounds like another thing the state passed for a law that doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, I.
These, if this could ease the regulatory process.
Well, we, we don't really.
Be about the same as money.
Well, there's no regulatory process in Rutland Town. I mean, if somebody's gonna build in Rutland Town, there's no.
Multi-units or something else.
Yeah.
Act two fifty would come in, yeah.
Yeah, after it's, yeah, if it's more than nine lots.
But I agree with you, Jerry. I mean, even a couple of points on a, on a loan would make a big difference. So. You know, if they, if they put their money where their mouth is.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, it would, it would be.
Find a way to help them financially.
Yep, exactly.
You got some.
Without financing, it doesn't have any legs.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just saying if the state puts forth an effort to help developers financially, I think that they could be on to something. If they don't. I don't see a developer. Really caring. If they go through this process, they'll go through their own. Personally, but anyway.
Yeah, I know. It's like. You know, a, a big chunk of this is, is identifying the sites and.
Right.
You know, what type of housing the town wants. But we can't, we can't tell developers.
Right.
Right.
Where or what to. To put in, but we can, we can lay out our preferences.
Yeah, I suppose Logan could come up with some areas that might be, uh, something that developers hadn't thought of. Maybe they'd be willing to jump on because they see a piece that's viable.
Yeah, we'll see if the, you know, if the residents come up with any of these offhand. You know, we've got that area that was going to be apartments, uh, down on the south end of town. Um.
So Barbara, a question.
That's stopper sale. Yeah.
Uh. What's the ask of the, uh, planning commission? Membership? Uh, is it just, just awareness or is there something you would like us to, uh? Contribute or otherwise identify in terms of Logan's responsibilities?
Yeah, I mean, I guess if we think there are legs to this, um, we should look at this, the resident survey when it comes in. And, and maybe take the survey ourselves.
Okay.
If we want to go that route. I mean, I, I think the resident survey is gonna tell us whether there's much interest in town. I'm not sure, um, if there is much interest among developers right now. Does anyone? Have their finger on that pulse?
Probably not. There's a, there's huge need for housing that the legislature is trying to do something with, but this isn't. I don't think much is gonna happen, uh, like you say, unless they have some incentive to. To encourage a developer to come in.
The only perspective that I could offer, uh, that, to that question, Barbara, is that, uh, I mean, the nationwide data. Say that the housing market in terms of development is, is pretty stalled right now because the interest rates are so high. So there is, there's a, there's a disincentive by design, uh, to, to put the brakes on that. The only way you could overcome that is if there is some funding to help, uh, mitigate that and as interest rates. Ease over the course of the next year, which they are reportedly supposed to be doing, then, uh, there, that interest may be renewed. If that can be accelerated by some type of funding, uh, as Jerry and, uh, Howard were just suggesting, then, uh. It, it may get legs and, uh, that may be, uh, something that generates interest. But short of that, I think we're gonna be at status quo. Given.
Yeah, I mean, I think the legislature was thinking when they created this, that. There are sites out there and there are developers out there and, and, um, they're not being matched up and towns. And town people are not. Are not thinking about the possible sites for housing. They're just not on their radar, um. And, you know, there needs to be this matching. That if they were asked, they would come up with ideas.
Right.
Does Rutland Town have much? Available land? It's got some farmland, but.
On your desk is the filing for the Post-Road Solar project.
Hmm.
A bunch. There's not, there's not a lot that's. Out there that's people, that, that's available for somebody just to go get, so.
I mean, if, if, if the task is to facilitate that process, then. Uh, we ask if people are interested in developing their land for, uh, housing purposes and we will match them with a. Uh, a developer and we ask developers what they're interested in, uh, doing this and, and moving the initiative forward and get their names. And then we can have column A. Interested, uh, property owners, column B, um. Uh, interested developers and then provide the list to each, each group. But, uh, that may be a subsequent step to the survey that you mentioned, Barbara.
Isn't that what Logan's supposed to do? Isn't that what this guy's supposed to do?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's what he's supposed to do, Dana.
So then, there's nothing we have to do except publicize it, maybe.
Right, right. And, and, and yes, and maybe we should help, uh, help them with, uh, you know, getting the survey out there. So we can get some, some input.
Do you have any input to the survey at all?
Yes, yes. He, he had, he has one that he designed for both select board and the planning commission to, to.
Review.
Yeah, to, to fill out.
Hope to fill out.
But I, I, I thought. That was putting the horse before the cart or whatever, um, that we should. We, we couldn't get very specific with sites. Without asking people. So, because there weren't many, there, there's not much town-owned land or any town-owned land. So we would be, we would be asked to pick sites and, and private property. And so I thought, well, wait a minute, why don't we just turn this around and do that survey first? So we'll, we'll have a look at both of those.
Well, I guess as I listen to this, I. Get more confused or lost, but it is the basic purpose of this program. Was to. Provide funding for planning commissions to identify town-owned property that might be available for. Development first.
That's one option.
Yeah, and then second privately.
Yeah.
And, um. It's a small step in terms of some of the stuff. That you read about now and how. How much housing we're gonna need and how many people are retiring in the next. Ten years and, and the shrinking workforce, you know, demand. So it seems to me. We just go along and see what he does.
Yeah.
I just wondered if we would have any specific input to the questions that go out to the town. From Logan.
If you would like, yes, he's.
I just wonder whether it's worthwhile for us to spend a half an hour looking at the questions.
Okay, yeah, he's still developing that, so, um. Uh, we, we may not want to wait three weeks. Um, he may want to get this out so he can get things rolling, so. I could send the survey out to those who are interested in looking at it.
I just thought as a body, we might have some insight that he might not have because we're more.
Right.
So Barbara, when you get it, why don't you just send it out to the PC?
Send it out, I'm sorry?
Send it out to the planning commission?
The PC, okay, yeah, um. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it'll depend on, on where the sites are. I mean, I don't think, I don't remember. Much opposition at all to the. Was it five stories that were going in?
Five buildings, three stories.
That's right.
It was the opposite of opposition.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, th- there were some concerns about our, our, um, fire equipment not being able to. Reach that high and stuff like that, um, but it was like a good problem to have.
Till you have to pay for the equipment to reach that high.
So, I mean, I think there are some sites. I mean, I think there is some potential. Th- this is, this is also optional. Um. But there is a need out there, so.
At this point, we're, I don't see any reason not to go along with it and encourage it. It's not costing us anything. If we have some, if we get the opportunity to have some input into the questions.
Yeah.
There's a lot of open land. Whether the developers want to, what they want, the owners, whether they want to. Put it up for development, what they, et cetera. That's gonna be answered down the line.
Yeah.
Rutland Town, there's very little water and sewer, you know, municipal available.
Right.
That's gonna have an impact on.
That's very true. That's very true. If it's going to be a, you know, a multi-unit development.
Nice to see something at the mall.
So, Madam Chair, it, it, it sounds like we're, we're speculating, uh, at, at this point and. It would seem like we need to wait until Logan gets you the potential survey. We can provide some feedback. Uh, that could be sent out and we can begin to examine the, the data coming back in at our next meeting. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, it does. I think it does. Bill, um, with, with the Diamond Run Mall, what, what is the latest plan by the owners?
They are attending the January thirty meeting, talking to the board.
To provide an answer to that very question?
That is the plan.
It is, it is providing some housing right now, right?
Uh, it could be. Not, not legally.
Not legally, not, not formally, not.
Not safely.
Not safely. And then, you, you know, um. You mentioned the top, some of the Thomas properties, I, you know, they were, they were hoping. On the opposite side of Route Seven. To do some subdivisions in there and that hasn't gone anywhere. I mean. You know, uh. Some of these sites, even the, even the Post-Road Solar has, you know, there's wetlands. That were in, impacted. Um. Where the panels were gonna go, and I think that's the same case up, up across from the dairy. The former dairy.
That, that's good. I think that's wet on the other side of the road, too. There's a lot of wetlands.
Yeah. So, yeah, so it'll be interesting exercise, I guess, to see what folks come up with and what we come up with. Regarding a post-road solar. Is that what that is? Okay, oh, yeah. Um, so the full, uh, petition. Um, has gone into the state. Um, there is. The developer, Thomas Hand, is still working with Historic Preservation. People, um, about the archeologically, um, sensitive area on the southwest corner. They're hoping to. Do some clearing of trees there. Um, so it'll be interesting to see where that comes out, but I guess they just went ahead and. Put everything in while they're still working on that. So I don't have a final answer on that. Um, and the town is okay. With, with what they have proposed so far. And the screening and all that kind of stuff. So we'll wait to see what comes up with the historic preservation.
Okay.
Okay. Um, anything else on those topics? New business?
Did we cover the Cluxton subdivision already?
Yeah, that's the final Mylar. That we've got here. That's gonna be.
We we already took action on that?
We did not vote, but. If you'd like to make a motion, Dana, go ahead.
No, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to keep track of where I am. In the agenda, sometimes remotely participating is more challenging than being there, so.
Does anyone want to make a motion or I don't?
It it seems like if we make a motion on one, we should make it kind of a prior, it seems cumbersome to me. I don't know. To 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 vote on that Mylar, we we wouldn't ordinarily do that, right, to approve it? Why would we do it now? It just seems like in the future that could create a problem if. We either do it or we don't, I guess, we do it all the time or we do it never. Right?
Yeah.
But if we do it, it becomes part of the record, that's all.
Right.
It just shows that it was here and.
But what about the next one where it doesn't come across?
I think we'd we'd always, I mean, Bill would always look at it and would like us to just be aware that it has come in and. If anyone, anyone wants to take a look at it.
I I don't recall voting on Mylars. I just remember Bill said. Is that your recollection, Jerry?
I think, yeah, we, Andy too.
I don't, I don't remember ever voting on them, because it's just part of what they have to do.
I think more than anything else.
Need to approve it, it's it's part of the.
It's part of like Bill's check off.
Right.
So that was leading to part of my confusion, the word said approval as if we were supposed to take action. So I'm not being able to see the Mylar or have or participate as effectively in the discussion, sitting here in my. Uh library, uh I was just asking the question about where we were with that. Item, so if we don't have to take any action, then it's just actually the acceptance of that Mylar.
Not even that. Well, except if we don't have any authority over.
Okay, so we accept it?
Yes.
As we discussed earlier. Okay. Let me, so we'll move down, spend a few minutes on the River Corridor this evening. Can everybody see that? There there's a list on people's desks and now it's up on the screen?
Yep, I can see it.
Yep, me too.
Okay. So I just pulled out just the commercial and manufacturing uh properties. Uh for this list and then just kind of group them geographically. We had talked earlier about. Um grouping, you know, the commercial manufacturers. In one group and then uh, you know, property owners in another and and probably having different meetings and. Maybe even different letters to the two of them. So we've got, um you know, we've got a group of them on Business Route Four. Um some more in the center Rutland area. And then. Um and then there's a group of them up on Route Seven North. Um right around McKinley Avenue and a couple along McKinley Avenue. I wanted to see if anyone. If anyone knew anything about GMCO properties. Um along Business Route Four, I think one of them. The nine ninety-one and eleven oh one. Business Route Four is C D Chopper. But I wasn't really clear, I don't remember what we said about seven fifty-one and eight oh five. Business Route Four.
I had originally marked those on the. Listing we had, this is what the address is where, I don't have that with me now, but. Um most of those, Gowan owns. These properties. In that area. I think C D Chopper is. Middle of it. But I'm I'm assuming that they're all, they're all Gowans.
Okay, that's what it looked like, um.
I thought it meant Gowan Marble Company, so I thought it meant. I wasn't sure. I mean, that's just what I'd made an assumption, that's what they were, because they're all on their property. But maybe it's not.
They're all on their property.
No, well, meaning that GMCO was Gowan Marble Company is what I assume.
Yep, yep.
Is that what you're saying or that we're not sure?
I think we're saying, but there are maybe different businesses, different kinds of businesses.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Different parcels.
So, you know.
The GM. C O. Li- language. Where where did that come from, the grand list?
I believe so.
You got it.
So we ought to be able to somehow. Determine. The the initial listing we had, Barb, it had all that on it.
Yeah. See, seven fifty.
Access to it now here, but.
Seven fifty-one.
I went through it, all these and. Under the grand list and picked out the address and the and the name. Of who was at that address, and I think those are.
Right, the the owner name, but the owner name is the GMCO properties.
So if you go to the. Secretary of State's website. And I think you put in. Either under the, you should be able to determine it from there, it's either a trade name registration. Or it's a corp- corporation or LLC. And it will have contact information, et cetera. Uh and it. And who is, who owns the name?
It's Gowan, I'm sure.
Yeah, I I my 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 instinct is with Jerry's and it's Gowan, but. They may have some different entities.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But again. Way back when we first started this, I went, I went through the entire list and. Again, I don't have access.
Okay, I'll dig that up.
Identified all, it was confusing down here because. Way these properties go along. By Gowans, it 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 was confusing, there's no question about it, the lots are. Intermingled and.
Right. So we've got that, that grouping, we've got the railroad station on Depot Lane. That's in the River Corridor, and we've got um the Earl. Auto or whatever that business is on. Campbell Road. And then we've got. On Route Seven, we've got some businesses. They're all. They're all businesses, I think. The uh. Yeah.
Oh, sorry to interrupt, um but I looked it up. Where Norman suggested and um. The principals for Gowan or for GMCO are Albert, Monica and Philip Gowan. At a Center Rutland P O box.
Yeah. I'll look into this a little bit more, so for each of these addresses, if there's a distinct business. At that address now, or maybe even just take a little road trip. Site survey. So, yeah, we've got Pradicos, we've got the Gallows, we think that, well, apparently they're still using. That structure for commercial purposes.
Gallows is an apartment building.
Which building is that?
The three seventy-nine U S Route North. But I think we thought.
Is that the appliance store?
No.
No, it's an apartment building.
But but it's it's near there.
Yeah.
Next to that. For some reason, it's. On the list that came from Marcia. Um it's a commercial entity. So, yeah, I guess it could be an apartment building, could be, okay. Okay, and then the Hones. What's their business?
What is that?
I think that's a house.
Four thirty-nine.
That's the appliance place, the appliance, yeah.
Isn't there a house down behind there, Bill?
Yeah.
That's probably on the residential list.
Yeah, that's residential.
Yeah.
And the Rizzi's on McKinley Avenue.
Being sold.
That's gonna be Twitter's.
It Twitter's is expanding to include it.
They're closing.
Oh, that is Twitter's, okay.
They're closing.
Are they closing?
Pretty open about it.
And then the Hendy's. Is that a garage?
That's a garage.
Okay. So. Getting. Getting a handle on this. These, so. Kind of. Down at the bottom, I started coming up with um. Some reasons that we could put in a letter or whatever we send out to these. These owners. Um reasons for supporting River Corridors. So i- if you see anything you want to add to this. Um it starts with severe weather, especially flooding becoming more frequent. It benefits the town budget and local taxpayers if a disaster. You know, once a disaster is declared. Uh reduces their own property, potential property damages. Reduces potential damages downstream. And affects new development only. Has nothing to do with existing development.
Suggestion is to put that at the top.
Okay. Oops. Anything else that should go in here? That would. Speak. That would resonate. With business owners, you know, we've got, we've got Karis in here too. We've got the Flori Plaza.
Would this have any? Impact? On the insurance? Uh of existing property owners and their existing buildings?
Whether we pass a River Corridor. It shouldn't. Um but if they're, but a lot of these places are also in the flood hazard. Area, there are also special flood hazard areas. Which are affect, which, you know, insurance companies do look at.
I was looking at it from.
Mortgage companies.
The other direction would. Provide any. For lack of a better word, protection against insurance increases. Uh if this were River Corridor was established, would that be an attribute that we could? Market? Maybe that's not, maybe it's too early to tell.
Yeah, um I I don't think. I've heard of that. The insurance companies doing that. But things are changing. Anybody online have anything you want to add?
Nothing here, Barbara.
Yeah, the list looks good.
Okay. All right, I'll put something together for the next meeting um that we. Can look at, something to send out to these business owners. And we'll see where we go from there. And I don't think there's there's much of a rush to get this going. Not like we were, what we thought we were facing with the short term.
Have we heard from the attorney yet? Hello, Tony?
Um I think it's between the select board and the attorney.
Rewrite the purpose.
Waiting for what?
A rewrite of a section.
The the purpose, remember. Reword that. Okay. Guys are gonna be back on camera, there we go. Down to announcements. The um. Budget is is ready. For the voters. Um the planning commission will get a bump for meetings, the. The pay for meetings, um it's a three point nine percent raise for all. Three point nine four?
No, four.
Okay. So that's in in the, in our, the rest of our budget stayed the same. We kept everything there. Um. There's a draft town plan for West Rutland out there, if anyone's interested in reading that. Let me know. And I'll get it to you.
I'm interested.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other announcements?
Do you, have you, you you do a report for the town report, right?
Did I miss a deadline?
Yeah. But the next time we meet, you will have.
Okay.
So. Well, I like the end of next week would be great, because tomorrow morning this room. Becomes the town report room.
Okay. And back to the, back to the budget, um the overall percentage increase was much more than four percent.
The overall budget?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and how much was it? From last year? Is it like forty-three percent or something?
No, 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 the the budget is up. So there's two numbers, the reason we did two numbers, so the budget is up. Fifteen percent. The amount to be raised by taxes is up five point five percent. Because there's additional money coming in that's offsetting expenses, so. The amount to be raised by taxes is five point five percent over last year. The draft budgets, so pre-town meeting is January sixteenth. The budget presentation for the select board is seven o'clock at the school, the draft budgets. The whole, all of them are on the calendar on the website, if you go to the calendar for January sixteenth. Go to the meeting date, you can get all the budget sheets right there.
Okay. Any other announcements? Jim, how are you doing tonight? All right, down to the minutes, so we've got two sets, I guess there weren't enough. People to vote on November sixteenth ones last time. So we'll start with November sixteenth.
I'll move to approve the minutes of November sixteenth.
Thank you, Dana.
Second.
I have one, one suggestion.
Okay.
And um under new business. Paragraph three. It reads the array will occupy twelve to fourteen six acres and does not seem to be appropriate. For other uses. I think it might be clearer if it said which land does not seem to be appropriate. I think it might be clearer if it said which land does not seem to be appropriate for other.
Um, how about the array walked by twelve to fourteen acres that does not seem appropriate for uses?
That does not. That's okay to. That's better.
Just that one?
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Uh, on the first line of those who, uh, commission members present, eight members are listed. All are indicated as voting members. I think there's an error there. What did you say? If eight members were present, only seven would have been voting members, correct?
Correct.
Is somebody listed that was actually not present accidentally or uh, was the wording, did the wording not reflect the actual voting members? Actually, there's the exact same number as present tonight. The same members are there. The only one missing from that group was, uh, uh, was, uh, Sherman Hunter.
Sherman was, Sherman was at that meeting.
November sixteen.
He sat right beside me. I think that's why it says all members are voting members. The two alternates were the two alternates. And that's how I remember it, Dana. Sherman sat right beside me at that meeting.
That may, that may be.
That's what it seems like.
So then his name was omitted from that, uh.
Yeah.
You can remember that far back?
Yeah, well, that was the last one I was at.
So I, I'll second that to Jerry because I remember the two of you sitting together.
Yeah.
Okay. So Will, um, Dana, you're open to changing that list? In your motion?
To add, to add Sherman.
Yeah. Andy, you're okay with that?
Yeah, yeah. And Norm Cohen and Jim Hall become non-voting members.
It's ambiguous when it says all members.
Right.
Ambiguous to the.
All regular members. To put.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
All regular members, yep. Of voting members.
So add Sherman. Um, what's the all regular members or voting members?
And you can, I mean, if you want to be, if you want to be specific about it, Norman and Jim are alternates.
There you go.
And if you want to get real specific, they're alternates and non-voting members at this meeting.
Or you could just say they are non-voting.
Yeah, we ought to develop a regular format and stick to it, I think.
Yeah.
So all regular members are voting members.
The time limit, chapter next.
There you go.
I'd like to.
Yeah, that should.
Maybe it'll have something we can stick with.
You'd like to see them what? Sorry?
Once they're corrected and signed. Or maybe the language there will be something.
Sherman was not here November sixteenth.
You, you're looking on the video.
Jim, Jerry, Andy, Dana, Barbara, Norm.
My, my apologies. It's the one before. See, Barbara, I really can't remember back that far.
I was impressed, really impressed.
Welcome, welcome to the club.
I don't have the minutes. I wasn't here.
Only four of us here at the last meeting. It was myself.
Right.
It was just four.
Howard, Sherman and Andy.
And it's because Sherman wasn't at November sixteenth that he couldn't be part of the approval for those meetings.
Gotcha.
For the last meeting.
That makes sense.
I wasn't one.
You weren't. I hated even suggesting, Bill.
So then you're, you're.
Yeah, so much for me.
Welcome to the club, young man.
We're back to correcting the, uh, original observation. So all members are not voting members. We have seven voting members. So I believe that that would be, uh, to, to state it. And, and you can't say all regular members because they're alternates. So it, it might be simplest to just say Jim, Jim Hall is a, a non-voting member for this evening's meeting.
Perfect.
But Norm was.
Well, I think Norm's the first, all then Jim's the second, if I remember correctly, but.
Yeah. Are we giving you enough direction to?
We need to do the parent control things in general.
Okay. So we'll take, we'll revise the motion again.
We have, I'd like to make.
My motion will be to accept the planning commission minutes of November sixteenth with the following corrections. In the introductory paragraph of commission members present. Uh, Jim Hall, if you just add except for Jim, if all members, except for Jim, it, it's all done. It's all fixed.
That's true.
Yeah.
Um, Andy?
Hold up, yeah. First, everybody read the, the first line on the second page. Select board is having a site visit on Dire Road for the purpose of throwing up this a town road. Is that?
This as a town road.
Throwing up?
That's how you, that's.
That's how you say it.
What it's called. Nobody likes it, nobody knows what it is.
In certain circles, that's what they say.
None of them like it, but that's what it's called.
Very good. All right.
So Dana, we've got.
Dana, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
That's okay. Is there a word missing in that line?
Yeah. Um, throwing up.
Throwing it up.
Throwing instead of this as throwing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Throwing it as.
The town road.
Throwing up it as a.
No, throwing it up.
Throwing it up.
Uh, there's also an apostrophe, uh.
Obviously saved too much time to do the minutes.
There's an apostrophe that Norman flagged earlier that he sent to me and you, Barbara, uh, on, uh, number one under old business, uh, Kent with a apostrophe. So with those corrections, I would, uh, motion to approve the minutes from November sixteenth.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Nobody voted when they shouldn't have, right?
I did. Should not have because I wasn't there. I wasn't voting at that meeting. So I probably shouldn't vote on it.
You, you were voting. We, we have.
If Sherman, if Sherman would.
We've come full circle on this one.
That was a screw up.
Sherman was not at the November meeting.
So you were.
So we needed one alternate.
Okay. So I was, okay.
Okay, December seventh.
I started a storm there, didn't I?
Jesus.
Let's see if we can do better on this.
I'll vote to approve the, I'll vote to approve the minutes from December seventh.
Do a copy.
Motion to approve.
Any word from the Hubbard's? Just as a side, okay. So do we have a, do I hear a second?
I just seem for a second.
Forgot to download them somehow.
Howard or Andy, you want to second that motion? Dana, Howard, Sherman.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay. And now I'll have to say that there's not a quorum present from tonight's, from that group to be able to vote on these meetings. So we will have to postpone them until next month because Sherman has to be present because we had a minimum quorum present. So all four of us need to be present at the meeting to accept these minutes based on the rules that we've established.
We're never going to get these approved.
No, probably not.
I raised this point when we were adopting our rules of procedure last year, but that went around and around and around again. So this is where we're at. When you have a minimum, when you have a minimum number of members to constitute a quorum at a meeting, all of that minimum must be present at a future meeting in order for those book, those, um, minutes to be approved. I think that's laborious, but that's where we're at.
You're right. Okay. We'll keep moving these forward, playing them forward. Thank you, Dana. No, you, no, you're not feeling great, but.
Okay. So I do my job.
Anything else for tonight? Anyone move to adjourn?
Show moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you.